Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, February 17, 2022 Hillsborough Board of Education Meeting. In accordance with the state's Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on February 15, 2022, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Can we please take roll? Please hold on, we're waiting for the business administrator to be added to take role. She had to be promoted, I believe. I'm not seeing her in the list. Okay, we have a secondary mic that we're going to leverage here.
Mr. Gillette. Mr. Gillette.
Here.
Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Mr. Kidd.
Here.
Slaney Beater.
Here.
Ms. Nurse.
Here.
Mr. Oliver. Ms. Trujillo.
Here.
Mr. Marini.
Here. I believe Dawn is here, let's.
Mr. Oliver.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let us rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. I would like to acknowledge the correspondences as listed in the agenda. For committee reports, I believe we have a township liaison report, Mr. Kidd.
Thank you, Mr. President. We both, President Marini and I, met with the township, with two township committee members and some of, some of their staff, and we discussed school uses, schools used for polling, use of school buildings for summer camps, and other items of ongoing operational cooperation between the township of the district. And members of the public should keep an eye out for renewed, for better cooperation in the future because we've already made some significant progress there.
All right, thank you. Are there any other reports that anybody would like to give that I don't have note of?
I have a report on the Garden State if you'd like it now.
Yes, yes, please go ahead.
So I attended the Garden State Coalition of Schools meeting on January 26th, and they had a guest speaker charity, Camilla, who is president of CJ Pride, which stands for Central Jersey Program for the Recruitment of Diverse Educators, and that's an organization of school districts with the mission of attracting diverse candidates to fill teaching positions in their districts. One of the initiatives is West Windsor Plainsboro School District is hosting a virtual job fair on March 23rd, and they also have a scholarship program to grow their next generation of educators. They additionally have a legislative committee that's trying to address some of the challenges such as EDTPA, which stands for Educative Teacher Performance Assessment, and the certification fees that can sometimes be challenging for new teachers. And the takeaway from, yeah, so that was, that's the report that I have, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trujillo. All right, I am now going to move over to the Board President's Report. Good evening. I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state. Under the authority of the people, I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability. That is a portion of the oath that all school board members take. The school board has a dual role, to represent the concerns of citizens, taxpayers, and parents to the school administrators, and to represent the needs of the students and school district to the citizens, taxpayers, and parents of the community. The school board does not operate the district on a day-to-day basis. That is the job of the superintendent, who is the district's chief executive. Rather, the school board sets the policies, goals, and objectives for the district, and it holds the superintendent responsible for implementing the policies and achieving the goals. There were a lot of questions as to why Monday's meeting was terminated, why police were not present, and why they were called. Police are not and should not be the norm at school board meetings. They have been asked to attend generally when the district felt their presence was warranted. Given that the message planned to be given at Monday's meeting was one that should have calmed the nerves of many Hillsborough residents, we had hoped their presence would not have been needed. Unfortunately, we were wrong, as we never reached that point in the discussion. To repeat what I stated on Monday, the Governor's Still Standing Executive Order says, "All public, private, and parochial preschool programs in elementary and secondary schools, including charter and Renaissance schools collectively school districts, must maintain a policy regarding mandatory use of face masks by staff, students, and visitors in the indoor portion of the school district premises." This order contains no language that limits the masking requirements to the instructional day only. The New Jersey Department of Education has indicated to the New Jersey School Boards Association that the masking requirement applies anytime the school building is occupied, including Board of Education meetings. New Jersey School Boards Association is aware of only one exception to that masking requirement. On October 19, 2021, the State Director of Emergency Management issued Administrative Order 2021-3, which temporarily excludes spaces in the schools used as polling places for the general election from the definition of the indoor portion of school district premises. Note, this was a temporary exception for Election Day only. Given that our aforementioned duties are to comply with state, local, and school board mandates, we were procedurally disallowed from continuing the meeting. As to why police were requested, this was not due to individuals refusing to wear masks, but to address the rising tensions with those in attendance. Please understand that the board is a collection of residents who have volunteered their time to serve the community, and who have agreed to respect and follow the rules as set forth. Given the concern for a repeat of this and our obligation to comply with the executive order, today and the upcoming February 28 meeting are planned as virtual meetings. I would ask, in the future, that were we in a similar situation, that residents take their concerns to their state representatives and not to their local, nonpartisan school boards who cannot affect the change that is being fought for? It is a no-win situation for all involved, and prevents us from making progress as it relates to the school district and our children. I will now continue with the communication that was planned for this past Monday. For those unaware, and I assume the number of unaware is exceptionally small at this point, Governor Murphy's Executive Order on Masks is scheduled to expire as of March 7. As you can imagine, this has flooded our inbox with people expressing their thoughts on how to manage the mask issue after this date, asking what the policy will be. Before I discuss that, I would like to inform the public on how this would generally work for any policy creation or change. Let's say the board was interested in a policy that would require masks beyond that date, which seems to have been the concern raised by a number of residents. Here's how that would work. First, this item would be raised by a committee and worked on until a final draft was ready for board review and approval. At this point, the policy would require two readings at properly noticed public board meetings with two affirmative majority votes. That policy draft would be added to the agenda, available to the public to see. It would only be at this point, after committee and two board meetings, that such a policy could be placed into effect. At this point, there is no such draft policy that covers masks. As Dr. Feltry will explain in her Acting Superintendent's Report, the go-forward plan will be to follow suit with the Governor's end of the masking executive order and allow masks to be optional. And while nothing is ever quite that simple, the goal will be to have a complete plan with documented contingencies by the following board meeting, well before the mask mandate is expected to expire. It is with that that I would ask those who have come here to speak on behalf of masks being optional, understand there is no current policy draft that would be contrary to your position. I will also commit to ensuring the public is aware of any such policy is drafted for board review by sharing such information through available social media platforms, in addition to the publicly available board agendas, if we head down that path. So you can join us at a future board meeting to share your thoughts. It is with great sadness, on the next topic, that you will see below that Jason Albanese has resigned from the board. I would like to thank him for his brief but valuable service to the board. His experience brought a valuable perspective to board discussions, and his presence will be missed. In the coming weeks, we will communicate the process by which his position will be filled, but for now, please join me in thanking him for his service to the community. Lastly, and to end on a very positive note, it is with great excitement, I can share that our new business administrator, Jerry Eckert, has moved his start date up from May 1st to March 1st. This board is excited to welcome him. He should be in person for our next non-virtual meeting. Now, onto the meeting. All right, so I think we will move forward with the approval of minutes. I will take a motion and a second to approve, motion of the minutes, 7.1, motion to approve executive session minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Can we get a roll, please?
Mr. Gillette.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Kidd.
Yes.
Slaney Beater.
Yes.
Nurse.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Trujillo.
Yes.
Mr. Marini.
Yes. Okay, we will now move forward with comments from the board and public. We very much welcome, we very much welcome input from the public. During board meetings, there will be two 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open for public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do so if they are attending in person, which is different for today, and I will explain. During the first public comment session, members of the public may comment about items that are listed on tonight's action agenda before the board votes. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district as per bylaw 0167. Before you state your comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address. There is a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes that there is a misunderstanding or an accuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act, the privacy rights of public employees encompass therein, do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. As for tonight's comment session, a Google form was used to collect names of community members who wish to speak, and this was posted on the district website. Due to the three-minute time limit and 30-minute session overall for each session, we will try to accommodate as many people as we can. Our moderator will promote attendees to be panelists when it is their turn to speak. Each person who registered via this forum initially will have priority to speak, and if time allows, other attendees can raise their hand to be promoted to speak. Please make sure your Zoom name matches the name that you entered in the Google form so that the moderator can find you. In addition, for this first session, as mentioned, this is on the action agenda only. So before you begin to make your comment, we will ask that you identify the action agenda item that you will be commenting on, and if you have one that you would like to speak on, you will then be given your three minutes that will begin at that time. That will not count as part of your three minutes, but please come prepared with which part of the action agenda which to speak to as we promote you. I think we can go ahead and promote the first person on the list that they're ready to speak.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first person on our list is Stefania. Stefania, if you'll bear with me just for a moment, I'll be promoting you. Stefania, I believe you've been promoted to panelist.
Hi, good evening. I yield my time, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. I know we have two or three on the list, so let's promote the next person if they would like to speak.
Will do, if you'll bear with me. Our next person is Amy Thomas. Ms. Thomas, if you'll be patient for one moment, I'm going to be promoting you to panelist. And Ms. Thomas, you should be promoted to panelist at this time.
Ms. Thomas, if you'd like to speak, just let us know what item from the action agenda you'd like to speak to.
I'm muted. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, sorry, it wasn't working.
No worries.
Okay, so, um, tonight, I would like to talk about the optional masking.
That, that will be in the second session. You don't have an action agenda item for the masks, but we'll keep you priority on the list for the second session.
Okay, so what does that mean, second session?
So we will have a second board comment after the action agenda.
Gotcha.
About 20 minutes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
All right.
Next would be Marcus Torriello. Mr. Torriello, if you would be patient, I'll be promoting you momentarily. In the attendee list, I'm not seeing a Marcus Torriello. Per the President's remarks, Mr. Torriello, if you can hear me, if you would change your screen name to Marcus Torriello, so we can identify you, I will promote you.
In the meantime, let's raise Tiffany Neal, who has her hand raised. She may have unraised her hand.
Ms. Neal, if you can hear me, you should be promoted to panelist at this time.
I apologize, I would like to speak during the second session of comments, thank you.
Okay, so as we see no additional individuals, we will move on to the superintendent's action agenda.
All right, the acting superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the education agenda as follows. Motion to approve professional travel-related expenses, oh, I'm sorry, 9.1 through 9.3. 9.1, motion to approve professional travel-related expenses. 9.2, motion to approve staff for the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund, SRA-LA Learning Acceleration Program. And 9.3, motion to approve field trip destination.
All right, can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We'll take a call.
Mr. Gillette.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Kidd.
Yes.
Ms. Slaney Beater.
Yes.
Ms. Nurse.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Trujillo.
Yes.
Mr. Marini.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
The acting superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the Human Resources Agenda as follows. 10.1 through 10.16. 10.1, motion to approve retirements and resignations. 10.2, motion to approve contract change. 10.3, motion to approve revised appointment of Business Administrator/Board Secretary. 10.4, motion to approve revised sixth-period coverage. 10.5, motion to approve revised seventh-period coverage. 10.6, motion to approve revised science lab coverage. 10.7, motion to approve revised leaves of absence. 10.8, motion to approve revised leave replacement teacher. 10.9, motion to approve leaves of the absence. 10.10, motion to approve appointments. 10.11, motion to approve mentors. 10.12, motion to approve sixth-period coverage. 10.13, motion to approve seventh-period coverage. 10.14, motion to approve, to pre-approve extra coverage. 10.15, motion to approve extra coverage. And 10.16, motion to approve group changes.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
I think I might have been muted when I asked this the last time, but there's, is there any discussion from the board members on this? Okay, great, seeing none, if we could take roll.
Mr. Gillette.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Kidd.
Yes.
Slaney Beater.
Yes.
Ms. Nurse.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Trujillo.
Yes.
Mr. Marini.
Yes, motion passes.
The acting superintendent, whoops, recommends that the Board of Education approve the operations agenda as follows. 11.1 through 11.9. 11.1, motion to approve resolution to withdraw monies from Capital Reserve. 11.2, motion to approve contract with the speech tree for contracted services. 11.3, motion to approve resolution affirming emergency contract. 11.4, motion to approve parent-student transportation contract. 11.5, motion to approve out-of-district placement. 11.6, motion to approve out-of-district placement. 11.7, motion to approve 2022-2023 non-public school agreements with the Somerset County Educational Services Commission. 11.8, motion to approve resolution/agreement for participation in coordinated transportation services for the 2022-2023 school year with the Somerset County Educational Services Commission. An 11.9, motion to approve bylaw for second reading.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Right, is there any discussion from the board?
I do have a question regarding 11.1. I'm sorry that this question did not come sooner, but I just misread the numbers at first. I thought, and I could be remembering, not remembering correctly, but that the roofing work was closer to 2 million or 2.2 million, and I saw that it was 2.7 million. I was just wondering if there was an increase or if I'm remembering incorrectly.
Mr. Gillette, if you'd like to speak.
Yeah, so, the way I recall it is that the board approved the ability for the administration to take a lease purchase for about 2 to 2.2 million, I don't remember the number either, with the remainder coming from the Capital Reserve. In the, we approved the ability to do that. In the end, the administration felt that they did not need to take the, the finances to release purchase, that we had enough in the Capital Reserve, apparently, to do this completely through Capital Reserve and save the finance costs and the associated costs with, with bonding it through a lease purchase. So that's, that's where maybe the disparity comes from, from the numbers.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gillette. Sorry about putting on the spot. Needed to jog my memory.
All right, we need to understand these things. Any other questions from any board members on these items? All right, seeing none, let's take roll.
Mr. Gillette.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Kidd.
Yes.
Slaney Beater.
Yes.
Ms. Nurse.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Trujillo.
Yes.
Mr. Marini.
Yes. Motion passes. We will now move on to the acting superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Marini. While I know that I sent much of the following information out in Monday's communication, I wanted to be sure to share it here again tonight. Once the mask mandate is lifted by the governor, the district's intent is to make the wearing of masks in school optional for staff and students. While the wearing of masks in school will be optional, there are many unanswered questions regarding the other mitigation strategies currently in place to prevent the spread of illness. The greatest mitigation factor for preventing the spread of illness in schools is staying home when presenting symptoms of illness. This mitigation strategy is where we need continued adherence from the students, staff, and parents for optional masking to be successful. The reason why the district waits for guidance from the Department of Health and local health officials and takes their recommendations is because, as a school official, part of my job is to protect the district from liability. Additionally, as a school official, I not only need to uphold the law, but also follow executive orders regardless of my personal views. A full communication regarding all the nuances and unanswered questions to lifting the mask mandate and making the wearing of masks in school optional will be sent out to the community closer to the end of February to give me time to gather and review all the necessary information so that I can address as many points as possible. We want students in school returning to as much normalcy as possible, as quickly as practicable, while keeping the students and staff as healthy and safe as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Feltry. All right, we will now move forward into the second comment period from the public. Once again, we very much welcome input from the public during board meetings. There will be two 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open for public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district as per bylaw 0167. Before you state your comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address. There is a three-minute limit on your public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as an opportunity to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes that there is a misunderstanding or an accuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of the public employees encompass therein do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. I am not going to repeat my comment before. We do not require you to obviously pick out an item that you'll be speaking to, but once you be run on, you'll have three minutes. The way this will work is once you hear the buzzer go off, we will give you a couple seconds to finish your thought, and then you'll be removed as a participant from that section. All right, so I think Stefania was the first one again on the list, and we can promote her.
Stefanie, you've been promoted to panelist.
Good evening, Ms. Marini and President, sorry, members of the board. I was actually not going to comment tonight, but I just wanted to express my deep regret with the outcome that has, that has come this way. I certainly would rather see adherence to the rule of law and legal and ethical guidelines from our elected officials than an admission that those things are not important. I'm truly, truly sad for our community tonight. I had hoped on Monday night to share with you more details about the pedestrian bridge proposal for the high school that I had discussed at the Township Committee meeting. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at those photos, and the next time we speak in person in March, I can talk some more about my experience in that area during the construction and the changes it made for the Skyway High School students. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you very much for your public comment. I believe Amy Thomas was the next one to be promoted. And just to keep note, it looks like we have Jane Stats and Amy Salinger after, after the people that have been pre-requested to speak.
Ms. Thomas, I believe you've been promoted to.
Hi, good evening. My name is Amy Thomas, and I'm a Hillsborough resident.
Okay, you have three minutes, you can begin.
Okay. Good evening. Tonight, I am here as a concerned and fed-up parent, as Governor Murphy ends mask mandate. Good evening. Tonight I am here as a concerned and fed up parent. As Governor Murphy ends mask mandates in school on March seventh, I want to know if this administration is finally going to make masks optional and use freedom of choice. Article six, section three of the Constitution says in no case should a collective agreement or consent of a community leader or any authority substitute for an individual's informed consent. Leaders should be aware that mandating masks on citizens of a nation and preventing their access to food, healthcare, transport, or education, if they don't comply, is a war crime. Masks of any or other medical intervention must remain voluntary. A mandate or executive order is not a law. Not only are masks harmful to our children's physical health, but they are also dangerous to their mental health, emotional health, and social health. They cause speech delays, learning delays, and communication problems, along with extreme stress, anxiety, and depression. This is complete child abuse. Our kids do not deserve to be treated this way. They expect us as adults to protect them. This needs to stop immediately. Yes, there definitely is a pandemic spreading throughout this country, and the clause is persistent to mask wearing. Dentists are even now using the term mask mouth, which is a play on the words for meth mouth that has serious consequences, including death. Then dentist Dr. Mark Salfani is quoted saying gum disease or periodontal disease will eventually lead to strokes and increase of heart attacks. Wearing masks daily is causing severe mouth inflammation such as the gums and cavities for those who have always been very healthy. Wearing a mask covering breeds bacteria in front of the mouth and nose where pathogens flourish in a warm and moist environment. These pathogens then enter the body creating disease. The human body was not designated to wear a mask. It is simply not healthy to block one's breathing passages with fabric or plastic, especially when men in China. There is no scientific evidence to show wearing a mask does anything beneficial. In fact, a mask doesn't even protect you from COVID nineteen, a virus, by the way, that is ninety-nine point nine seven percent survivable. The virus droplets are smaller than the fabric. Okay.
Thank you.
That was three minutes.
So we have a clock here that's running three minutes. Appreciate your time. Next, I see Marcus Torriello. Mr. Torriello has adjusted their names, so I do see them in our list. Mr. Torriello, you've been, uh, promoted to panelist. Sorry, are we going to reset our timer again? We're good? Okay, you are free to begin your time. Mr. Torriello? I'm not sure if you're on mute.
I'm sorry. Uh, I live in Hillsborough. I moved to Hillsborough because of the school system. I have two kids in the school system. So I'm for permanent mask removals uh, for our kids. Number one, masks don't work. There's no evidence that masks prevent spread of COVID. There's no studies anywhere. Number two, COVID does not affect healthy kids. My, all my kids got COVID, and they released effect. Number three, masks, uh, give kids trauma. Obviously, they get kids trauma. Do you really think it's healthy for an eighty-pound-year-old child to wear a mask all day long to restrict, um, that kid's oxygen? Of course not. What psychological problems are we giving our kids for them? They're going to be afraid of an illness that's invisible to them. What else are they going to be afraid of? As of last October, thirty-three states, including Texas, Florida, Indiana, Governor, um, Georgia, United Kingdom, France, Ireland, they're all giving up mask mandates, okay? Now, again, why you think, um, you know, we, we have to make this permanent? Because I do believe the governor, Governor Murphy, who I affectionately call Warden Murphy, is going to put these bat masks back, back on these kids because I think it's all political, because, uh, they're afraid of losing power. So, um, if anybody saw the Super Bowl on Sunday, seventy thousand people were not wearing masks. One of those persons was a union official from, from California. He wasn't wearing a mask. And they have a mask mandate in California on the Super Bowl. Monday morning, those kids had to put, put the masks back on. So I think this should be permanent in the schools, in the daycare centers, on the school buses. Thank you for your, your time.
Thank you, Mr. Torriello, for your public comments. Next, we have Jane Stats. If we could promote, I think she's next, correct? I think so. If you'll be patient with me, Ms. Stats, you're being promoted. I also see Ms. Lewis. You've, you've, uh, signed up following. Ms. Stats will be Ms. Lewis. Ms. Stats, you have been promoted to panelist whenever you're ready. Do we have the timer? Thank you. All right, it's Stats.
Hello, can you hear me?
You can.
Uh, I'm Jane Stats. I live at one oh one Devon Char Court. Um, I want to talk about the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget. Uh, first, some recent history regarding the budget. Three years ago, the equivalent of twenty-nine full-time teaching positions were eliminated due to lack of funding. Every single one of those twenty-nine teaching positions was needed for our students. The caps for class sizes were then raised to reflect reality, not educational soundness. Last year, the budget for the current school year was unanimously approved by the board. I was thrilled that it included maintaining staff and adding four teaching positions, not exactly twenty-nine, but, you know, baby steps. In fact, those points were highlighted during the administration's presentations about the budget. However, in actuality, the administration did not follow the budget. They decided to eliminate two elementary teaching positions. They also decided not to even attempt to hire additional teachers. It had nothing to do with teacher shortages. So I'm asking the board and administration, please don't repeat that pattern for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget. I'm asking the administration and the board, please add teaching positions at every level and do not eliminate any teaching positions. Class sizes in the elementary grades are as high as twenty-six, and there are many class sizes in grades five through twelve that are in the high twenties, and a significant number of classes have thirty or more students. You know those caps for class sizes that I mentioned earlier? Well, many classes are above the so-called caps, so the caps are meaningless. High class sizes are a serious disservice to our students. Ee- each student gets less attention and less feedback, among other disadvantages. If you can't hire enough teachers to lower all high class sizes, then please prioritize hiring additional elementary school teachers, with apologies to my former colleagues at the high school. Smaller class sizes are crucial for the best possible learning for our youngest learners. Students' learning experiences at young ages lay the foundation, good or bad, for their learning when they are older. So if the budget includes hiring additional teachers, I certainly hope that the administration will follow through and actually make those hires. But if the administration decides not to follow the approved budget and not make any or all of those hires, and I really hope that doesn't happen, I would expect that the administration would, at the very least, inform the full board and the public as soon as that decision is made. The Hillsborough Township Public Schools mission statement is this succinct yet powerful sentence. The Hillsborough Township Public School District is committed to providing a superior education for all students so they will lead us successfully and responsibly into the future. The people who are directly providing that education to our students are teachers. Let us not lose sight of doing what's best for our students. And I'd like to thank Dr. Feltry and Mr. Mariney and the rest of the board for how they handled what happened on Monday night. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment, Ms. Stats. I think we have one pre-registered individual who is now available to join. Tiffany Neal. Ms. Neal, I'll be promoting you momentarily. And Ms. Neal, you've been promoted to panelist.
My name is Stephanie Neal at Six Cedar Hill Terrace. I'm here today as a concerned Hillsborough parent and a public health professional with fourteen years of experience. Please don't just drop the mask mandate cold turkey. Instead, please adopt a mask policy that is linked to local COVID data. For example, if community spread is very high, masks should be required. If the community spread is low, masks can be optional. This kind of policy would allow the district to be flexible as the COVID situation changes in the future, which we know it will. Regardless of your general mask policy, I trust that you will be maintaining the mask requirements for students and staff returning to school after five days of isolation or quarantine. The current timeline of wearing a mask for days six to ten helps to reduce the spread of COVID nineteen while allowing people to follow a shorter isolation or quarantine period at home. To quote the New Jersey Department of Health, "Schools that do not impose universal masking should revise their COVID policies to utilize masking, among other prevention strategies, under certain circumstances." Finally, if the district does move to a mask optional policy, you should be sure to fully support students and staff who may choose to continue wearing a mask. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neal. I believe Ms. Salinger is next. Ms. Salinger, if you're, if you will bear with me, you'll be promoted momentarily. And Ms. Salinger, you've been promoted to panelist.
Okay, we good?
We are. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, Amy Salinger, I am the Hillsborough Education Association treasurer and also a teacher at Otten Road School. Um, I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Christina Smith and the HKA Pride Committee. Christina is our second VP, but she could not be here tonight because she has a training. So this is her private report, um, to share with the community. I would like to bring you up to date on some of the pride initiatives that have, that have taken place in the last few months. In December, Pride adopted a group home consisting of twelve adults. There was a virtual pizza party, gingerbread cookie decorating, and holiday bingo. It was a fun night for all who attended. In January, Pride collected food and non-perishables to donate to the Hillsborough Food Bank. Members in all eight schools and the Transportation Department and the Board of Ed participated in restocking the food bank. In addition, a one thousand dollar donation accompanied the delivery. This past Friday, Pride sponsored our Feeding the Essential Workers initiative and provided lunch for over two hundred essential workers throughout Hillsborough. Lunch was sent from Jersey Mike's and Lenny's. Pride is currently running our postcards for kids contest. This year's theme is Believe You Can and You're Halfway There. The contest is open to any student in grades five through twelve. Students should create a drawing to be made into a postcard that supports the theme. Three winners will be chosen, one from each school, and their design will be made into a postcard to be delivered to elementary schools for teachers to send to their students. In addition, one grand prize winner will be chosen. The deadline for submission is February eighteenth. All of these wonderful initiatives are made possible through grants funded by the NJEA. This concludes Christina's report. And speaking for myself, I just wanted to, um, express my gratitude to all of the members of our Pride Committee. They do phenomenal work every year, and I know how, how happy it makes them to, to participate in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salinger, for your public comment. Uh, seeing no additional hands raised, I will close public comment for today. Just in case we have multiple folks on the board, if anybody on the board wants to make any additional comment, uh, it looks like Mr. Gillette, uh, feel free to, to join the discussion.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. President. So, um, uh, first of all, um, I wanted to say that in, uh, this past summer, um, when Governor Murphy uh, decided that students would be, students and staff would begin uh, the school year in September with mandatory masking, it's my suspicion that ma- maybe all the superintendents in New Jersey were relieved at that, that they didn't have to make that decision for themselves. It was made for them, but I wasn't relieved. I, I, I prefer that we have local control over, over what we do in our community, especially with a sensitive issue, uh, like this, uh, where that can be polarizing. I'd like to, I'd like to hear from the constituents, uh, and, and, and make our decisions here. But having said that, this might be a question for the attorney, actually. There's been no mitigation strategy in the past two years that the board has voted on. We've been told that we don't vote on, on, on mitigation, that this is something thing that certainly we can, uh, the superintendent, acting superintendent in this case, can consult with us, but we haven't passed any uh, votes. We passed, we voted one time to verify that the district had a plan. That's, that's about it. We didn't individually vote on any aspects of the plan or agree, or necessarily agree on any aspects of the plan that came from the, uh, and administration. So I, it's my understanding now, beginning in March seventh, that Dr. Feltry has already, has decided that we would follow. I guess it's following, the government's not really making a directive for a mask optional. He's allowing the districts to have local control over that. So we're making that decision. So my question for the attorney is, who's making that decision for March seventh?
Uh, Mr. Lorthing, if you'd like to unmute?
Sure. I mean, in, in terms of whose decision this is to make, you know, the board has the ability to adopt policies, and part of the board's policymaking authority could be reaching a decision on whether or not masks are going to be worn in schools. I think the board clearly has the ability to decide that one way or the other come March seventh.
Uh, how is that different, with all due respect, how is that different from, uh, deciding that students should go five days a week to school rather than two, or we should have full day of school rather than half day of school? Could we have passed policies all along the past two years on those issues when we were told, uh, that the administration had sole authority over all of that, all of that?
Well, I, I think it's always going to be something where the, we have to look at the line, which is always difficult to determine where it actually is between administering the schools and adopting policies.
What does the state say?
Well, in terms of what the state says, it really goes back to what's in the Code of Ethics, where it says that the board and each board member has the role to see that the schools are well-run, not to administer the schools, and to confine your board authority to, you know, policymaking and things along those lines. And in terms of, you know, specific policies in this range, just looking at the policy menu online, the board has adopted some policies that do touch on some of this. I see policy sixteen forty-eight point eleven, sixteen forty-eight point thirteen, and sixteen forty-eight point fourteen, which are the Road Forward Health and Safety Guidance for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, school employee vaccination requirements, and a safety plan for healthcare settings in school buildings COVID nineteen.
So those were all policies that the board had no input on that were required to be passed by the state. We didn't, we didn't, I, I don't remember any, anything that we could have changed or done anything with those policies.
Well, that, that may have been true at the time, but, you know, now we have the opportunity that the mask mandate has lifted to look at what I'm sure is in policy sixteen forty-eight point eleven on mask wearing, where previously it had just mirrored what was in the executive order. And now that the executive order is no longer going to require mask wearing, the board has the discretion to change that.
So does the board need to pass a policy to, um, to do away with mask, mentor mask wearing, or change their current policy, or anything? Or does the superintendent get to just make that proclamation?
It would depend on the terms. If the policy requires mask wearing independent of the executive order, my recommendation would be to change the policy. I don't know off the top of my head what that policy says, though.
The, and, and these questions seem tough, but these are the questions that the public is a- asking that give them angst. Because there, if, if a fifteen-year board member is confused on this, how, how does a, has a, 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 a mother and a father with three kids in school with, uh, you know, working sixty hours a week, each of them, uh, have ti- have the ability to keep up with this? So, uh, we got many, um, emails on this issue. We only got one email touching on a topic that I was interested in, uh, which is of a- asking us to ensure that masks, optional masking be allowed to continue without, I'm assuming that means without a doctor's note or a individual, what's it called, individual health plan? I'm not sure the exact name. Without that, I- Without that, and I would suggest that the board adopt a policy to allow masking to continue through the end of the year. Before COVID, we would have never permitted a child to walk into school and wear a mask all day. They would have had to have a doctor's note or some type of individual health plan requiring that. There's going to be a time post-COVID when I assume we're going to go back to that, but I don't want to give people uncertainty about that for the rest of this school year. So I'm suggesting to the board that we prepare a policy to allow, to continue to allow masking without a doctor's note till the end of the school year. That's all I have to say on this issue tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. I think we'll add that to the governance agenda, which we'll be meeting next week. All right, Ms. Trahio, if you'd like to add comment?
Sure. I just have a few announcements on items that are coming up in the community. So for the municipal alliance, they are sponsoring a parent learning community, PLC, which is a five-week session to help parents have meaningful conversations with their kids. It was sent out by School Messenger, and it starts next Wednesday, February 23rd, during the day from 12:30 to 2 o'clock, and signup details were in that School Messenger. Also, next Wednesday, Borough Safe is having a virtual Hope for Tomorrow event from 6:30 to 8:30, and the keynote speaker is going to be Scott Prendergrass from Minding Your Mind, who will share his story of struggle and how he was able to turn his world around by incorporating positivity into his life. And then the Hillsborough High School Theater will be presenting SpongeBob the Musical on the weekends of February 26th and 27th with Matt and May's that weekend. And on March 4th and March 5th, there will also be a livestream on February 26th at 7 o'clock, and you can find out more details on their Facebook page, and tickets will be coming soon online. I think it's at hill/booktix.com, but again, you can find out more details online. Thank you.
Thank you for that update, Mr. Trahio. It looks like Mr. Oliver has his hand raised, so feel free to join.
Thank you, Mr. Marini. I just want to say that I'm pleasantly surprised at the tone of tonight's evening, and I want to personally thank you, Mr. President, for conveying a lot of information to the public. Very, very well done in your statement. I think it sheds a lot of clarity and light to some of the problems that we had on Monday. Dr. Feltry, my heartfelt thanks to you being put into a very, very difficult situation. And I know there was quite a bit of angst on your part after Monday's meeting as well, but I think you are doing an absolutely superb job putting into, once again, a very, very difficult situation. I just want to reiterate that I truly believe that the governor, with his executive order now being lifted on March 7th, we will move towards a masks optional. I do believe that it is prudent that we have some contingency plans, but I'm optimistic and hopeful that, you know, this is going to be with us for a while, but I think at least prudent mitigation strategies, which is clearly the most important, is if your child is not feeling well, keep them home. There's, you know, studies that show masks don't work, there's studies that show masks do work. I do know one of the simplest things that a student cannot see with the masks on is a smile from a fellow student in a hallway, and there are some struggles that students are having as a result of this, so I'm looking forward to this being put behind us. I'd be remiss, and I don't want to put this on a sour note, the actions of Monday were very, very disheartening. I moved to this community 38, 39 years ago. I decided to become a school board member, and I ran with President Marini on a platform called Education Above Politics. There, you know, there really isn't a place for politics, and unfortunately, sometimes these mask mandates become very political. And I'm very, very, you know, proud of Ms. Salinger. Love hearing great news. Ms. Stats, absolutely 1,000% correct. We need to focus back on the children. We need to get class sizes down. We need to keep the quality of education in this town, to the point that made me move here 38, 39 years ago and raise three beautiful children. Going through the numerous, numerous emails that all of the board members have received over the past couple of days and weeks, and catching up on them today, I wanted to share an email that I saw today, which really made me feel proud and gave me some optimism of where we're going with this district. And I want to ask everyone out there, including my fellow board members, but more importantly, the public, regardless of what side you stand on, whether it's mask or unmask, vax or no vax. Triangle School sent out a bingo card called Random Acts of Kindness, R-A-K. And as I'm reading through this and I'm looking at this little bingo card, these fourth graders sent this amongst one another, and I would hope that every member of the community and every board member would click on that. And I just point out some random acts of kindness that were on that bingo card, and it's ask a friend how he's doing. Ask a friend if you could help him with a problem. Give a smile, give a hug, call a relative, shovel your neighbor's driveway, remove the snow, donate some food to an animal shelter. So I ask everyone to think to themselves, why did you pick Hillsborough? Why did you become a school board member? Why? And I think the answer should lead you to, it's about the children. It's about the students. Let's not forget that. Let's keep the positive momentum. Let's keep the clean dialogue. Let's be professional. Let's be sympathetic and compassionate to one another. Thank you, everybody, for the time. Thanks for listening to me tonight and have a great week.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. And I'll just add, I mean, really quickly, you know, as heated as everything became last week, I truly believe everybody comes from a place that they want things to improve, and, you know, it may not always present itself in a way that everyone likes, and we need to do better as a community to communicate without yelling and screaming and, you know, almost breaking out in fights, but I think, you know, there's a lot of emotion here. We get it, and that's why we ended that meeting, wanted to, you know, calm everybody down. We're back here. As John mentioned, great comments from those who joined, and we've seen, we saw some nice emails come in from the community that they were, while they were saddened, they were hopeful that, you know, we'd start moving in the right direction. So with that, I will take a motion of second for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Thank you, everybody, and we'll see you on the 28th.